Okay, it being seven o'clock, I'm gonna open the April 1st Planning Board meeting for the town of Halifax. Before we get into any business, I want to read the Governor's Order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may be, that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Halifax Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided in the order. Anyone in the audience that wants to be recognized must speak clearly. I need to do a roll call vote of the members present.
Gordon?
Amy?
Amy Altrup?
Rick Mary.
Alan Diaz. And Mark, I think, Joanne, did you recognize Mark? You did. Okay. First order of business is a bill for Amory Engineering in the amount of $814. It's for engineering services for the 311-313 Plymouth Site Plan. Do I hear any more?
Make a motion to pay the bill for Amory Engineers invoice number 15568A for engineering services for 311-313 Plymouth Street for $814.
I'll second.
Amy, seconds. No reason for discussion. I'll take a roll call vote. I'm gonna start with you, Gordon. You're up top, Gordon.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yep.
Alan? Yes. Okay. Next order of business, we do have a hearing coming up, but that's at 7:05. Next order of business, we'll just go down to our discussion items, and I believe discussion item number 17. We have a letter.
Page 17?
Page 17. I'm sorry. Page 17.
That's Franklin Street?
Yes. This is the Franklin Street, the solar project. Has everybody got a quick chance to take a peek at this?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. The reason for this letter, I requested it because the original site plan, or the original as-built, did not have the correct street address based on the approvals they got from the assessor's office. So we asked for an additional site point, a letter of substantial compliance referencing the original address. What did happen is that the applicant and whoever the engineering firm are all longer together, and we're not going to be able to get a new site plan, or new as-built site plan with the proper street address. So when I'm asking the board if it's gonna be okay, we'll accept that as-built, and we'll just change the address from, I think it was 260, it's gonna be 269 now, it might have been 241. Joanne, you might have to help me with that. Was it 241?
Why wouldn't their old engineering company just make up the correct plan?
From what I understand, they no longer have a relationship with them.
I still think that we need the site plan to have the correct address on it.
Okay. That is the as-built that we, has been missing in the office. But if they don't, if they don't have a relationship with them, this is what the applicant has suggested to sort of close this thing out. So that's what I've been told. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Right now, we don't have the as-built, is that what you said?
No, we do not have the as-built. The as-built was on the desk a few weeks ago, and it somehow disappeared. I believe Joanne has ordered six more, or five more.
From the old engineering company?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
From the old engineering company?
I bet I don't know.
Joanne?
Well, I just asked Ashlysh if he could get us five more copies.
Yeah. I would think that if he's gonna get five more copies, he's gonna take his copies and...
We need to have the correct address on a site plan that was signed. I mean, that's, that's, that has to happen.
Okay.
So, so right now, we, we don't have the as-built? We're waiting for the as-built to come in, is that what you're saying?
No, the as-built, the as-built has been in. The as-built was left out in the office to verify, for all members to take a look at it. The problem was, is that I think the original plan was 100 scale, and the as-built was a 200 scale.
Yeah.
So it was kind of difficult to put it together, so I asked the engineer to provide us with a letter saying that the project was built in substantial compliance.
Which engineer?
I did see the as-built there, and I didn't look at it. Then it disappeared.
Yeah, we, I know that I was complaining over a month ago that it wasn't in there, and you didn't recall that at that point in time, and then later brought it up at the next meeting.
So, so I'm a little bit confused. We're, we're waiting on a new as-built to come in? Is that what we're waiting for? And we're gonna get five copies?
Wait, hold on. Yes. I think it's in the email that's here.
Well, why can't the as-built that he's having printed have the correct address on it?
I don't have that answer.
Well, I think that needs...
I believe in this, in this email, it does indicate "They're not able to get a survey renamed, the new address, and newly stamped by CNS Energy is no longer working with this surveyor. I can modify the address myself as the best, as the, on the as-built plan dated September 30, 2020."
I didn't think that we could handwrite.
If what he can do is come in and change it and initial it, but...
I didn't think that we could handwrite on engineering plans, it's not fraudulent.
So, does anybody have any suggestions?
I think that the...
Is the parcel ID the same?
Yes, it is.
So the only, the only thing, I mean, the as-built was fine, you know, the problem was, was it was, it wasn't 269 on it.
Correct.
Which isn't a big deal, that's just, you know, it had 241, which only had to be changed to 269. I mean, that's, that's the only problem there was with it, that I can see. So the parcel ID is the same, everything's fine. Yeah, I don't, why keep dragging this on?
So is, this, this is just that the assessors basically changed the number?
No, they didn't change the number, no. The number originally was 269, but somehow it changed, it ended up at 241, but originally was 269. So they just want it back to 269, that's all.
I think, Gordon, what happened was somehow didn't lots own, merged, it was an original subdivision, somehow it merged, and, and with the agreement they had, I think it's the tax agreement, the tax agreement had 269 on it, yet the other engineers, I guess, called it 241 for whatever the reason.
You know what I mean, I don't want to cut in. The original pilot, the original pilot was 269, that they just wanted to stay at a 269. The original pilot agreement was 269.
Okay.
Not 214, so somebody made a mistake along the way there somewhere, so it was pretty simple, I think, just...
Okay. Do I hear any motions? Or, or, or Mark, do you want to make any comments, or you just want to go to a motion?
Yeah, I think if that's the only thing holding up the project, I'd be willing to accept it with a, a note that would be initial and dated.
Okay.
I don't know how we...
You make that into motion for Mark, and then we'll go to discussion?
I have one, okay.
Okay. Now, hold on, if you got a question?
I'm just saying, like, how can we say that we can write on some plans and they're not, it's not a, it's not a problem, but we can, but we can write on this one and initial it, and it, and it isn't a problem? How can we do that? That's, that's just inconsistency. We have to have consistency. We can't initial a plan and write changes on one, and then tell somebody else they can't. That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, but if I could, if I could say, I think in this case here, what we're talking about is an identification for the assessors realistically. So the parcel numbers are still the same, if you looked it up on the town map, you're still gonna find the same parcel.
Yeah, it could just be a little confusing, in my opinion.
Hey, Mark, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, let me get the verbiage here, to approve the site plan for the Franklin Street solar farm, and the condition that the lot number is changed to match the assessor's records.
Okay. Could, I'm, I'm gonna go for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Rick. I'm gonna just second the discussion. Would it, would the board prefer, would we have just a little question that Mr. Karish provide a letter stating that he's gonna do that, that'll be part of the record? Is that okay as part of your motion, Mark?
Yeah, I'd amend my motion to include the requirement from Ashlysh Karahadi to provide that information.
So we have a motion in a second. I'm gonna move, no other discussion, I'll move to a vote.
Well, Alan, so this is on the as-built, correct?
Correct. As-built for the site plan, correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
I'll go for the vote.
Can the compliance letter that's wet-stamped be also recorded with it?
It is recorded with it.
All right, just making sure.
Okay, Gordon, we're gonna move, we'll move to a vote, looking for a roll call. Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Positively, yes.
Alan, yes. Five-zero unanimous. Okay. It being 7:13, we're gonna go to a continued Form A submittal for 49 and 63 Carver Street, if my recollection is correct. The applicant came in a few weeks ago. The board had some comments on the plan. I have the full plan in front of me, and I believe they addressed all of the comments, although I did notice one comment, I mean, excuse me, I did reach out to the engineer and the assessor's office based on the lot number. Now, I believe Mr. Clem, is there, Mr. Clem?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, you are the engineer, right?
Yes, the surveyor.
Yeah, you're the surveyor. Okay. Did you want to just take a minute? And I did give you a list of the, the comments. I believe you took them all. The question that did come up, and I verified this through the assessor's office, but I'll let you explain it. We did move the circles appropriately. The question came in, this subdivision includes a parcel A, which has been, based on your information, not a buildable lot.
Correct.
Okay. Just, I was a little confused with that, as you know, and I, and I spoke with you on that, and I spoke to the, to the assessors. Can you just tell me what's gonna happen with parcel A?
Sure. So the existing two parcels, number 63 and number 49, contain that weird little dogleg that goes out behind number 37 Carver Street. So as the applicant's son lives right there at 37 Carver Street, I suggested he cut off that little piece that goes there and transfer it to his son's house there at 37 Carver Street, strictly for the purpose of, you know, making the lot a better shape. And if he ever moves, you don't really want a piece of commercial property, you know, going out behind a residential property for, if it doesn't need to. So that was my, my suggestion, as during the A&amp;R process, to create this parcel strictly for conveyance purposes. So I've added a note that says such on the left-hand side of the plan, parcel A to be conveyed and combined with map 71 plots 17A, 37 Carver Street.
Excellent.
Okay. All right. Is there any, any other questions that any board members have?
No.
Okay. And I actually did confirm with the assessors, because I was concerned with that, and their answer is that at the next, next assessment period, that that lot would be combined. I thought that because they created it, they might need a new assessor's number, but said that it'll automatically be combined. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, I'm gonna move, first I need a motion to approve this Form A for 49 and 63 Carver Street.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Can you take that down, that plan?
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
You're gone, Mr. Clem, but the plan isn't. Oh, there we go. Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the plan for 49 and 63 Carver Street?
Plan of land 49 and 63, Carver Street, Halifax, Mass., as it is given to us today with its notes.
Okay. That plan being prepared for Joseph M. Poderski.
Sorry, I'll add that.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Hearing that we have a motion in a second, I'll move for a roll call vote. Gordon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan, yes. This plan is, will be in the planning board office. We do have a timeframe, so it's kind of important that everybody get in and sign that. I believe their extension is till 15th. So it's kind of important we can get in, you know, early next week to get that signed for the, for the owner. Okay? Anything else on, nope, we're all set with 49 and 63 Carver. Okay. Being it 7:18, we got a few more minutes before our next hearing. Our next item for discussion is Pasture Lane, and I just want to update the board. I relayed the information that the board had discussed last week regarding holding a hearing and getting some clarification as to what the repairs are going to be. I did send that out to John, I can't think of his name.
Okay.
Paket. He responded. I also reached out to Amory Engineering, Pat Brennan, and asked him to compile some sort of a figure as to what it was gonna cost to do the inspections and final report. So we're in the process of getting both of that now. I do have a brief breakdown of how this work is gonna be done, but I believe this needs to be formal, and I'm just gonna go over it kind of quickly. It wants to do it in three phases. Phase one will be all work related to the paving will begin, but not limited to the manhole work, water inlet modifications, division wear, remove trees, raise hydrants. During this time, the construction of the house will begin. We would like to get all the site work and heavy equipment complete prior to the paving. And it's got 12 to 14 weeks. So this, this proposal needs to be sort of legalized. Phase two would be substantial completion of the house, upon substantial completion of the house, the binder course will be replaced, top coat will be installed, sidewalks will be constructed. Phase three would be any loman seed tree and any punch list work not completed in phase one or two. They anticipate the project taking four to five months. And to me, this, this needs to be really spruced up, so we can have a complete breakdown of what's gonna happen, when, and I would request that he have all of that once he applies for the public hearing. So that's all I have on that.
Do we have that in our file? Because I don't seem to see any of that here.
That I don't know. I can check.
I found it. Okay.
You found it? Okay.
What page are we on?
Well, this ain't, this is not a page, because this just, this just come in, and it was on my town email, and I haven't not mastered how to forward this stuff out of the town email. So if you didn't get it, I'll make sure Joanne, Joanne does get it, so she can forward it. And I think it's just informal. I think we need to have a, a very detailed agreement on the completion and issuance of building permits and so forth and so on. But I'm sure we'll have town council involved once we stack, you know, we get all the estimates and stuff together. Okay. It being still 7:22...
Back to that, can I ask if, have we gotten any information from town council and use or otherwise about this that we can have forwarded to the planning board, so we can also review what's coming from them?
Do we have?
Any emails or communication with town council regarding Pasture Lane, and including the email that you are talking with Bob?
Okay. You, you're gonna have to do your research. I know I worked in the folder to get the research that I found, and there was some information in there, in some conversations with town council. I think it had to do with the last, the person that owned it, but that information was in the file.
I did see that.
Says anything else?
I meant anything in the last few months? Have we had anything from town council about this? I've been in the file.
I'm gonna say yes, and I'm gonna say, when the, when we started getting involved with this, I believe I reached out to town council to ask the process. I asked the process if, on how to proceed with either reopening this, or what was, again, the proper procedure to try to accomplish getting this subdivision done, and, and I believe his answers were that it needs to be reopened.
Great, can we have that email sent to us?
Maybe. Do the best I can.
Well, it is planning board business, so we do need to see it in order to understand.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the complete streets. There is a letter. There were some questions. Let me see, complete streets is going to be page 22. Thank God, Joanne, you put all this stuff together. Amy, you had some questions last week on the costs associated with complete streets. There's a letter dated March 19, 2021. Are you satisfied with that particular response?
No, it doesn't really state any of the engineering costs that we've already used or any of the like about the engineering costs that would have to come to do the other 13 projects. So I did do what I said I was gonna do, found out we spent $20,000 from our road maintenance account, this, that's not in this, and also that it would probably cost $60,000 to $70,000 just to do the bike path engineering, and that that project would cost over $400,000 to do, which would be more than what the grant would allow, and then the other 14 projects wouldn't be able to be done, as an example. So no, it does not fully answer my question, but I did my research, and I am reporting it to you now.
Okay. Anybody got any other comments on the complete streets? We made recommendations, and the recommendations will now, would have gone to the board of selectmen and the highway director. Hearing none. We got a couple more minutes. The next item on our agenda is subdivision control regulations, which is Chapter 235-6, Paragraph C. We had some discussion on the timeframe for A&amp;R plans, and we're finding that for some strange reason, our bylaw requires that an A&amp;R plan be endorsed within 14 days, or they can get a constructive grant. It seems that pretty much most towns are 21 days. So what I'd like to do at some point is to hold a hearing to maybe change that. I'm not 100% sure how to hold that hearing at that point, but if the board has some interest in doing that, there's a couple of other regulations that we should probably discussing, on the, the, the bylaw, which requires site plan before ZBA, which gets kind of confusing. So is the board interested in holding some hearings to potentially change some of these regulations, to get them updated to, to...
Yeah, I'd definitely be interested in taking a look at it. We'd have to figure out if maybe we could get a second meeting, or enough time for a second meeting. I understand that the A&amp;R should be quick, but if there were just, you know, Scribner errors on the plan, like, there should be time to address those. We've never had too much issue with them. Normally, they are, as simple as they get, it's approval, not required. But I do see the reasoning for them having a shorter period than other plans. So I'd be willing to give it some thought.
Okay. Anybody else got any comments? Okay. You know, I, I agree with Mark, a little more consistency, if, you know, other areas are 21 days, especially my limited experience, it seems to be that that circle seems to be a problem with most. I mean, the last two didn't have the circle in the right place, and then we did have a couple with, one with Scribner errors, so why don't we continue this to our next meeting? If we can, I'll try to put something together with this particular regulation in the site plan approval process versus who should go first? ZBA or the, the planning board?
I think we should have discussion on it, and then, then go forward with it.
Okay. Yeah, what else, what I can do is put both of these, all the text in its entirety in both of these regulations, and then we'll set it up for discussion on next meeting.
I think we, we all have that in our books, though, right?
Yes, you do. You do. Sometimes, and it's up to the board, sometimes I like to see them both together on one sheet versus flipping through, but I'll do that, and those that want to look through their books, they can. Other than that, we'll have two different sheets, and you can read it, and, and then...
That sounds good.
Okay. Being 7:29, I am going to hold on for one second. I'm not gonna go to the site plan petition just yet. I think I'd rather wait the 30 seconds or a minute, and let's start our hearing on the zoning bylaw change.
All right, that sounds good.
The zoning bylaw change. I didn't write that page down. I didn't write that page down. It'd be twenty-two. Joanne, did I misplace it? Hey, Joanne?
Page ten is the memo. Page eleven begins the bylaw.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I had it, had it in the wrong place. All right. Thank you, Charlie. Okay, it being seven thirty. I, and the next item on our agenda is going to be a zoning bylaw hearing to make some changes or adjustments in the floodplain bylaw for this particular uh, hearing. I'm going to ask that someone make a motion to open the hearing for such purposes.
I'll make a motion to, um, open the Halifax planning board hearing tonight, Thursday, April first, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty via Zoom to see if the town will vote to make changes to Halifax zoning bylaw, section one sixty-seven dash fifteen floodplain district regulations subsections A floodplain district and F definitions. Said proposed changes are on file with the town clerk's office, Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-ninth Plymouth Street, Halifax. Notices advertised in the Plimpton Halifax Kingston, Kingston Express on Friday, March twelfth and Friday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
We have a motion. Do I hear?
Second.
Second. Good in seconds. I'm gonna go to a roll call vote. Gordon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan? Yes. Okay. We are in a hearing, I believe there was a gentleman, Mr. Eric Carlson was going to attend to explain the floodplain bylaw. I, I believe it's, um, a regulation that we must comply with through some state regulations. So do I have a Mr. Eric Carlson?
I am here. I am Eric Carlson from Department of Conservation Recreation Flood Hazard Management Program.
Okay, could you, sir, give us kind of an idea? When we know, I guess, why we need it and what these changes are actually going to do to the town?
Okay, there are a couple of things at work here. First of all, there is a mapping update that's underway and it, it's actually been underway for five or six years. But, um, last year, we kind of went through this. The maps were all ready to go and, uh, ready to be adopted. And, uh, that whole process had to be canceled because of the COVID situation. So, and I know Charlie's familiar with a lot of this because I've been working primarily with Charlie. But, um, uh, so over the summer FEMA regrouped and sent out, uh, in January of this year. The decision was made in, in December, but in January of this year, a letter of final determination was sent to the town that described the process. When a mapping update takes place, communities that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program have to update their local bylaws as, as a requirement of participating in the program to accept those maps. The other thing that's at work is that we at the state have, uh, come up with a new model bylaw. The model bylaw that we're using this year is different from the one that we used last year when we went through this process. Because of using the new model bylaw, a lot of new language has to be added to the local bylaw. The, these are not new regulations per se. They're going to be new to, to your zoning bylaw and to, to the bylaws of all the other communities that are affected by this. A actions that FEMA has had in thirty years or, or longer. We just haven't been requiring them in Massachusetts to be adopted into the local regulations. So the two things put together, uh, the maps will be, uh, become effective on July sixth of this year. So by that date, and this is all explained in the letter of final determination, the LFD as we call it, by July sixth of this year, these regulations are required to be in place, adopting the new maps and, uh, updating the bylaw to include the language that we now include in our model bylaw.
Okay, um, I'm going to put it out to the board. Just, I got just one question first. Is there a major impact to the residents of the town in any of this language? I, I know that we, we are not in a, uh, an ocean flood zone.
Right.
Know that, that there are certain other areas in town that are in the X zone or whatever the zone it is, but it's in floodplain. Is there a big impact on the residents of the town?
There's not a, the maps aren't changing significantly. In, in fact, um, the town has, I believe it's eleven panels. The flood insurance rate map for Halifax has eleven separate panels. Only two of them are being updated and, um, it's a watershed based update. So the town of Halifax actually is within two different watersheds. Most of Halifax is in the Narragansett watershed. But one small corner in the northeast part of the town is in the Cape Cod watershed. Now, this mapping update is for the Cape Cod watershed. So two panels that are up near Silver Lake are updated and only the floodplain right in that small area is being updated. I look at it, it doesn't look, I can hardly tell the difference from the old maps to the new maps. But that's me. If, if you want to have a better idea, you could take a look at those panels. I think Charlie knows how to find them. They're, they're available online. If.
Yep. The old panels and the new panels are all available on the town's website.
Okay. So, uh, the maps, in my view, aren't changing significantly. Now, as far as the language that we've added, most of the language that we've added that we're requiring to be in the local regulation are administrative tasks that the town would be required to carry out. Notification, uh, there are some notification requirements of, for water course alterations. There are some things that have to be done if a variance is issued at the state level. There, there aren't really significant changes in what is required if somebody is doing something in a floodplain. Most of FEMA's requirements are in existing state regulations such as the building code. And the building code is gonna re, is gonna apply regardless of what's in your local regulations. So that's where most of the, the standards for construction, um, also Wetlands Protection Act has standards for other activities in floodplains. Uh, there is going to be a requirement for, um, permits are gonna have to be required, uh, for all things that FEMA, uh, defines as development. And the, the, the definition for development is one of the things that has to be added to if, if, if you look at the, the Warren article on, under the definitions part, uh, development permits are required for all things that are, uh, defined as development. It, uh, doesn't have to be a formal permitting process, but at the very least, a review, a, and documentation that a review has taken place to, to determine impacts to floodplains and flood related impacts. So in my view, to answer your question, I'm giving you my opinion. I don't think that, uh, the mapping changes are significant. I don't think the, uh, requirements that are being added are significant. But again, that's me.
Okay, um, for, for the board members on page thirteen, uh, section F on the definitions is what he's talking about for development changes. And it looks very similar to our stormwater management by law, um, unimproved real estate. I, I do have one other question, then I'm going to put it out to, to the board members. You've got different zones. These, these zones do not have any relationship to DEP zones, DEP zone A's, uh, zone.
No.
Zone twos. Nothing.
No.
Okay.
Nope.
I'm gonna, I'll poll each board member to see if they've got any questions. Um, Gordon, you're right up first. Anything? I can go back to you if you want. Gordon, you, you mute, you're muted.
Sorry.
Okay.
I don't have anything right now.
Okay, now you're, you're on the video or something, whatever it did.
On what?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay. There you go. Mark?
Uh, no, I've had a chance to look over. I'm familiar with them and I, I don't see a large impact. And I believe it's something that we will be adopting regardless. So.
Rick, any, uh, any questions from you, Rick?
No, no questions. I don't see any problems.
Okay, Amy?
Um, I was curious what the differences in the modeling, um, were gonna be.
I'm sorry.
He said there was changes in the modeling and I was curious to hear what, what he had for changes on that.
In the modeling?
Did I misunderstand you when you were talking about?
Possibly. Um, I, i- if you're talking about the hydraulic modeling that's done to produce a flood insurance rate map, is that what you're asking about?
I believe you said there was gonna be changes to the, um, my, um, the modeling. So I guess that's what, what you would be talking about, the hydraulic modeling.
No.
I'm not sure if he meant the model being the way and the procedure that we handled these things.
Thank you.
I, I don't think, yeah, I don't think it was the TT style.
Okay.
Cool. No, good one.
We made, I think I know what you're talking about now. I said that we made changes to our state model bylaw. We have a model bylaw, which is, it, it's an example of a bylaw for, for towns to use when they're drafting up their own bylaw. So we made changes to our state model bylaw.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Well, what would the, so like the, the changes would basically be, um, the changes.
Um, what I can point, I can point out some things. I, I have the, the draft, uh, open in front of me and I can point out the things that are new.
Okay.
I'm looking at the bylaw that it's one sixty-seven dash fifteen. Section A is not new. I, I should say section A, part one is not new.
Eric, Eric, just clarify, you're in our bylaw now or you're in your?
I am in your bylaw right now. So I can tell you what things are new from, that we added to our state model bylaw. So I'm in, uh, section A. And number two is new. Number three, which says the degree of flood protection required is considered reasonable. That's new. Number four, the town designates position of building inspector to be the floodplain. That's new. Uh, number five, which is, like I, like I said before, a lot of the new language are administrative requirements. So number five is new and that requires that the town, uh, submit data to, to my office and to FEMA. If there's any data that indicates that base flood elevations are changed in a given area, so that, that's new. Number six, which is about variances, that is new. Number seven is new. Number eight is new. Number nine is new. Ten is not new. Eleven is not new. Twelve is new. And those are the new things that I can see here.
So the one on variances, what it?
Yep.
What, can you tell me that's new? Can you tell me what the change is from what we had? Is it completely new?
Okay, there are two things that relate to variances, uh, number six and number seven. Number six is, um, the way the state building code works, uh, the town of Halifax cannot issue a variance to a building code requirement. So there's a state building code appeals board that issues those variances. FEMA has a requirement that when a variance is issued to a building standard that, that this thing that's described here happens and essentially the town, uh, has to get a, uh, documentation of the variance to keep on file and write a letter to the, the person who received the variance talking about, and the language is right there, talking about how the variance will affect their insurance rates. So that's an administrative requirement that we did not require communities to have in their local regulations previously. But FEMA is now insisting that we, we do have that in the local regulations. Number seven also relates to variances. So there's, the first one is for variances that are issued by the state to a state building code standard. Number seven is for a variance that's issued by the town of Halifax to one of the local standards that are in this zoning bylaw. So basically what it just says in number seven is if the town is issuing a variance to one of, one of these town standards, not a state building code standard, it, it has to meet these criteria, good and sufficient cause, um, a minimum necessary to afford relief and it will not result in addition, additional threats to public safety. So like I, like I've said before, these are actually things that have been in FEMA's regulations for a very long time. But we have not required these to be in the local regulation. And FEMA told us that we have to start doing that.
Okay, so that would mean that anything built in any of our flood zones would have a, have to really have a, a good reason for a variance.
Yeah. That's a good way of putting it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Amy?
Not so far.
Okay, Eric, just to, to expand on that, on six and seven, um, would these be predominantly for any new construction in a flood zone or? Or all construction?
Well, it, it would actually apply to, the building code variance would apply to either new construction of a building or substantial improvement to an existing building. Because that's where building code standards apply to those things, new construction, substantial improvement of existing structure. Now, that would be number six. Number seven could apply to, uh, any, anything that's defined as development.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's all within our floodplain districts. And you're saying the, the, the like is the predominant one. Is it East Ridgewater is another area than that in the town?
Um, there's floodplain all over the town. The, the floodplains that, that's changing as a result of this mapping update is the floodplain near Silver, Silver Lake. But there are other areas of floodplain throughout the town and these standards would only apply in those floodplain areas.
Anybody else got any other questions for, um? Gordon, you look like you might have a question.
Yeah, so are, are we looking to be, uh, looking at more map changes coming soon? Or is this something that's gonna hold for a while?
This, this will be your only map change for a few years anyway. Like I said, FEMA is doing, uh, mapping updates based on a watershed basis. And this is, uh, part of your town is in the Cape Cod watershed. So when this is done, the Cape Cod watershed's not going to be looked at for, for a number of years. And right now, there's really nothing going on, uh, restudies happening in the Narragansett watershed. So I don't foresee another mapping update for it. From start to finish, a mapping update takes at least five years. So I, I would say at least that long.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members, any questions or concerns?
Um, I do have one more question. Um, so in, in the flood zones, all, meaning like, um, what we were just talking about, all of the new parts of this amended bylaw that we're looking at right now that would not only apply in the Silver Lake area, it would apply in the Narragansett and the other areas all around town, correct? that would not only apply in the Silver Lake area, it would apply in the Narragansett and the other areas all around town, correct?
Yes, it, any area that's, that identified as floodplain, as defined in your bylaw.
Thank you.
Eric, I, I don't have my bylaw open, do we have a, uh, MSL or the mean sea level, does that determine the floodplain? Is it the sixty contour? Um, uh, not necessarily, um, basically the datum that's used to define elevations in, in flood insurance rate maps right now is, uh, NAVD nineteen eighty-eight and that's North American Vertical Datum nineteen eighty-eight, which is based on mean sea level. But there's, there's no, like, standard elevation that's used to define a floodplain, it all depends, it's very localized. So in any given area, a, a flood could be at a different elevation. I don't, I don't know what elevations are typical right now, like, because I don't have the maps open in front of me, but it, it wouldn't be like something standardized across the town, like anything lower than sixty is flood, is flooding, so. It's, it's gonna be, you, you, to get an elevation, a flood elevation, you would look at the map and the map will, uh, for, for some zones, the map will tell you what the flood elevation is. Okay, I didn't know if it had any relationship, we have a sixty MSL for conservancy, so, but it, there's no relation between the two. No. Okay. Um, I've asked any board members, is there any members from the public that wanna comment on this particular, uh, bylaw change? Charlie, I don't know about the hands up business, but, uh,
Not seeing any hands so far, I see no sign of, uh, notes.
No sign of notes.
Not in the chat function, I don't see anybody asking on the chat, I see no hands raised.
Okay, is the board comfortable, um, with the explanation? By Mr. Carlson, uh, we're ready to proceed with closing the hearing?
I'm good.
Well done.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to close the hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the floodplain district. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second. I'll second.
Okay, Joanne, take your pick. Uh, Gordon, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Let's roll call vote, Mark, start with, again, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan, yes, okay, the hearing has been concluded. Um, I would be looking for a vote to approve for town meeting, the proposed, uh, changes in the floodplain district regulations. Someone wanna make that motion?
Is, is the motion just to recommend the change?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend the changes to the floodplain zone for the next town meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Amy, seconds, I'm gonna go to a roll, roll call vote. Gordon, you up, could you?
Gordon, yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Okay, so that article, Joanne, is gonna be recommended for town meeting.
Alan, I just wanna thank Eric for taking time out, I'm sure, I don't know how many evenings he works, because I'm sure there are a number of communities handling this, but I appreciate him attending tonight, so thanks very much, Eric.
Absolutely, thanks for all your answers.
Eric, thanks again, leave your email, so the first complaint we have, we'll give them.
Okay, go on up, thank you.
Thank you.
No good on.
Right.
Our next order of business, uh, we will stay in discussion, uh, Amy put a request on for site plan versus petition issues. Uh, Amy, can you just kind of explain that because it's really not clear to myself or I think to the public as to what that is, so we're gonna?
Yeah, a few weeks ago, um, I don't have the date right off my, um, the top of my head, I went in to sign a withdrawal of site plan and it was left out to also sign a withdrawal of petition. And I didn't believe that the planning board signed the release of petition, so I was confused about that and wanted to have that explained, because I believe site plans come in front of us, but not petitions, and I just wanted to see if I was incorrect on that or what the explanation was on that.
Okay, does anybody have an answer, because I, I didn't?
Alan, I can, I can imagine a possibility where there was a, in fact, a petition for a special permit before the board and that, both, and the applicant applied both for a special permit and a site plan and was withdrawing the applications for both and therefore the planning board needed to sign both.
Okay, you, that might have been the, um, uh, the subdivision project over off of Haywood Street, I mean, we did have a petition on that one.
We also have the marijuana farm.
Okay, Amy, could it have been the marijuana? Could you shed any more information, because?
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember, let me look at my notes. Um, I think it was either one of those, but I wasn't sure, we had a petition open at the same time, I thought it was just a site plan, so I just wanted to, again, see whether or not we were supposed to sign the petition, because I was under the impression that the petition was in front of the zoning.
Well, for the marijuana farm, it was before you all. Uh, marijuana goes to the planning board for both site plan and special permit.
The subdivision, the, um, one with the Hilda Lane, there was a, um, multifamily that had a special permit before the zoning.
Okay, I, I don't know that you got your answer, Amy, uh, I didn't see the paperwork.
I do have an answer, I know that, um, sometimes now I'll just have, we'll have a petition, but I know that we only voted to sign the site plan release and so I did not sign the petition, as I didn't remember having a vote to sign that.
Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda is, uh, Pledge Tree Service, four fifty industrial drive, just a compliance update. Um, I see that we have the fire chief on board.
Alan?
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay, Joanne, Joanne, just note that Gordon's, uh, not.
It's noted.
Noted.
Okay.
Um, I see we have the fire chief, I requested both from the fire chief and the, uh, Board of Health, uh, to get a status on, um, Pledge Tree, because in our board's discussion, I think the fire chief gave him ninety days to bring the matter into compliance, Chief Viveros, are you on with us?
Steve, you're muted right now. I don't know if he's paying attention.
I don't know how to chat, so.
Well, I, I, uh, ask him unmute, I'll try and get a message to him also.
Get a message to him, the one letter that we got from the Board of Health felt as though that, what number are we there? Twenty-nine and thirty, we'll just start with that letter. Did the, uh, the board members read page, um, that letter from the Board of Health email, number twenty-nine?
Yeah, um, that's the depart, um, that's the Halifax Fire Department, number twenty-nine. Number twenty-seven is from the Board of Health.
Okay, and the fire chief is unmuted, chief?
Unmuted. Chief?
He unmuted himself, but he's not saying anything.
Chief?
His mic's not working, he says.
His mic's not working, okay, um, I guess it better be read, is page twenty-six. Chief, are you on? Okay, page twenty-seven basically is a letter saying that, um, Board of Health, uh, let me see, septic system was done, da-da-da-da-da. I don't know if anybody needs to read that, the other, the other letter that we have is from the fire chief. And if he's not on, um.
Do you want me to read it out loud?
Uh, you can, if you want.
March thirty-first, Pledge Tree Service, four fifty Industrial Drive. Dear Mr. Ferrera, I have reviewed the engineered site plan dated March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, submitted by Bracken Engineering for your property located at four fifty Industrial Drive. I find that the plan complies with the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code five-two-seven CMR one, regarding the storage of forestry products. Per our discussion, I am now ordering that the property be brought into compliance within thirty days. Please note that my approval of this plan does not supersede any other requirements set forth by other towns, departments or boards. Please contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Jason Viveros.
Okay, having heard that, does the board wanna proceed with any other action at this point, or they wanna continue until, uh, the chief has completed with his stuff? I'm open to take any.
I don't think there's any action required at this time.
Okay, um, everybody concur with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll wait till the chief has completed his, um, his process.
This looks a lot like the, uh, plan that we signed, Mark, do you remember that? Page thirty? Doesn't it look a lot like the one that we signed, what was it, a year ago?
You know, I, I don't wanna say that I remember it that clearly.
But do you, do you remember signing a plan?
I, I, I know that we, uh, that were in front of us, um, like I said, other than the fact that I just recall it being, um, a bunch of storage footlogs, uh, I'm not sure.
Oh, you don't remember the building proposed last year?
Not in great detail, no.
Okay.
Okay, hearing nothing else, um, Charlie, I guess you can release the fire chief unless he's, he's back on and he?
I think he can hear you, he just hasn't been able to speak, so, uh.
Unless he's, unless he's got a comment, can he chat?
Yeah, he can chat, I don't, I haven't seen anything else from him.
Okay, then, you know, we've read his letter into the record, so we'll, we'll wait the thirty days until his, uh, his work is done. Okay, our next order of business is whether we're going to meeting minutes or correspondence, the board have any preference? Hearing none, we have January seventh, meeting minutes. And I believe um, Joanne, are these the minutes that we were tie vote on?
Yes.
They are, but they're not in your packets, I had already given them to you at the last meeting, so I emailed them to you again today.
Okay, that's fine, um, Mark, um, you, you volunteered?
Hold on one second, I'm having a little problem, I think I've disconnected a couple times. Yeah, hold on, uh, if you give me one second.
You had trouble, you had, um, gotten bounced out and he's back, back in, so give him a minute.
We'll wait for him.
And I'll be back in, Alan.
Okay.
And we lost Mark again, so we have, we'll have to wait another minute.
I don't have the January seventh, from the last meeting, would it have been the one before, maybe, Joanne? Honestly, I don't remember, was he the last one or the one before, but?
Okay.
He did have them and I emailed them to you again today.
Okay, and then we don't have, we only have them by email for the March fourth one, correct? Because I don't see those in here either.
I emailed those two today.
Okay, thank you.
They're, they're one, the last.
Charlie, my screen is flashing, so does that mean Mark's coming back?
Uh, I don't see him back.
Someone just left.
I don't see him in the waiting room, yeah, somebody else had left, we were up at sixteen people, we're down to fourteen.
Okay. Why don't we, we'll wait a few more minutes for Mark to come back on.
While we are waiting, did we ever send an email out to find out what, um, town council said about meeting minutes that we have at two-two? Because I believe that we asked about that a few weeks ago, we still don't have that.
Oh, what are you asking, who are you asking, Amy?
You.
Okay, what was the question?
Do we have a determination from town council on what happens when we have meeting minutes that are tied?
Um, we've got some communication from town council regarding that, um, I, I believe that the sorry.
Could, could?
Believe the, um, and I don't have the email in front of me.
Well, could we have it shared with the planning board?
Yeah, that would have gone to Joanne, um, if he sent it to me, um, I believe with a two-to-two tie, um, that we'd either have to have draft minutes, or like Mark suggested last week, that you could have a, the member that was not present review all the tapes and that person could in fact make a decision on that particular, those meeting minutes.
Can we have that email forwarded to the planning board, please?
And I believe that, there, there was an email that came in today regarding that, there was a form, um, I know it did come in today, because it came in late today and I forwarded it out. Charlie, we still don't have Mark?
We don't have Mark yet, no, I don't know what's going on, I guess, um, I, I don't think I have his phone number, so I don't think I can even text him. Somebody, if, uh, Joanne has his phone number, maybe she could give him a text.
I fell off too.
Yep, I'll do that right now.
Yeah, I don't have him.
I don't see anything forwarded to us from town council. Joanne, can you make sure that we receive all matters that the planning board has received? Information from Mayo or Quessell in the past few months, please, and send it to the whole planning board?
I can do, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
I think, Joanne, you, you pretty much do, as the emails come in and go out, at least from the volume of emails I get, I, I think you're pretty consistent with that, right?
Right, I do do that, um.
Well, and you're sending them to our, um, well, you send them to our town email and then I know mine, you send my personal one, so. Does the board wanna just take a few minute recess to see if Mark comes back on, or do you wanna just go over correspondence, um?
We could take a break for a few minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, he just dropped off, so having some kind of technical difficulty there.
Yeah, and I don't know that the phone he's on is the phone that, the, the number that we have, so.
Yeah. He was on, he was on a phone?
I, I can't tell, I, I have no idea. I don't know if Charlie can tell if you're on a phone or not.
Well, it won't, it wasn't a pure phone in the sense of, because it shows a phone number if it's a phone.
If it's a dial-in, yeah.
Okay, so it must have been on.
Be on a smartphone, you wouldn't know.
Yeah.
It's eight, ten, eight, ten, anybody just take a five-minute break, just get up and stretch?
Yep.
Get back on, okay.
Okay. I don't see anybody coming back.
Uh, another couple of minutes, another minute.
Well, why don't we move on to correspondence? And get some other things done so that we don't have any clue whether he's coming back or not.
Rick, back with us?
Nope, Mark's not here yet.
I say, is Rick with us?
Yes.
Got another minute, so, we'll just, if he comes back, he does and he doesn't.
I'm here, you hear me now?
Uh, yeah, we can hear. Okay, eight fifteen, Charlie back, oh, this Charlie, so we just got four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. To answer one of Amy's questions, I got an email today from Larry regarding this. But I have, it came on the town email, I have no idea how to forward it, so as soon as I figure it out, we'll get it forward. Okay, Mark's not here, so we'll skip the January 7th meeting, the March 4th, 2021 meetings, did everybody get a chance to review those?
I did not.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, sorry.
Amy, did you get a chance to review the March 4th meetings?
Yeah, I made updates to it. And I sent them last weekend.
Is that the one in the big text?
We made it, I made it clear so that people could see what the changes were, yep.
Something came through in gigantic text, I don't know that that was, is it the March 4th?
Yep.
The last, the last meeting?
No, two meetings.
Oh, no, sorry. Forget, it's April.
Yeah, I know.
Ju, is Joanne, oh, Joanne?
Yes.
The March 4th meetings?
I emailed those two, because there were 76 pages, so I didn't want to print them out, there would have been kind of a lot of printing, so I emailed them to everybody today, I emailed my version and Amy's version.
I didn't know this whole thing was me and Big, I'm sorry, I don't know how that happened.
Okay, that was the one, yeah, it was gigantic print, so are we ready to move forward with the March 4th meeting, what's the board's intentions?
I'll make a motion to use my Amy Troop 3421 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, I'm just gonna comment, I did not, could not read those, they were so large, so I don't know if.
There was only, yeah, there's only a part in red, should I read it out loud so you can hear it, or?
Uh, no, I should have the meeting minutes.
You do.
So I particularly aren't ready to vote, I got something that was very large print. So we have a motion, you made a motion, right?
Yep.
Gordon, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, just give me that motion again, Amy.
Hold on, I'm just looking at this, cause, um, yeah, I made a motion to use my draft minutes, 3421, I mean, I have no problem with making it the real size, I don't know how it got all this big, sorry about that, but, um, make a motion to use my minutes on March 4th, 21.
Okay, do you want to hold them and, so that everybody can read them, because I did not read them, so, but.
Do, do you want to hold them till the next meeting?
I, I could not read any of her comments, so yeah, if you want to hold them, if you want to withdraw your motion, we'll hold them till the next meeting.
Is that your motion?
No, Gordon, you made a second, if you want to hold them, if you want to withdraw your second, she wants to withdraw a motion.
Rick, could you read them?
No, absolutely, I didn't see any.
I'll, I'll resize them and send them.
You know what, honestly, I'm fine with Joanne's minutes, I don't have, you know, so I wouldn't vote for him anyway.
Well, it's just, it's just what happened in the meeting.
Gordon, would you want, you want to withdraw your motion, your second? Um, and we'll hold them till we get Mark back here?
Oh, I'll withdraw that and hold it till the next meeting, that's fine.
Okay, Amy, you want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, that's fine, I, I said, that's fine.
So we'll hold them. Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, correspondence, an email from Joanne Andrews regarding 01 Ponsett Street map, 95 parcel nine dash zero, DEP file number. Everybody got a chance to read that email?
No, but I will right now.
Can we read it into the record?
I'll do that. From Joanne Andrews sent Thursday, March 18th, 2021.
Uh, one minute. Typically, uh, we, uh, correspondence, we review. So if you, I think, Gordon, if you want to read it into the record, then let's get a motion, read it into the record, motion in a second?
I'll motion it to read it into the record.
I'll second.
Okay, we're gonna go to a roll call vote. Uh, Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Go.
Uh, Amy?
Yep.
Alan, no. So you have a three, one, Joanne. Okay. You have the floor, Amy.
Planning board, I'm sorry, um, Thursday, March 18th, 2021, 10:10 a.m. to Joanne Snow, subject 01 Ponsett Street key, 1224, comma parcel 95 dash nine dash zero. Planning board, 31821, on December 9th, 2020, at about 9:30 a.m., I was forced into the shoulder of the street while a dump truck exiting this business site, 01 Ponsett Street map 95 parcel nine dash zero. DEP file number 171 dash zero five zero four was in my lane as I was traveling on Mon Ponsett Street, heading towards Slimpton, we almost collided, a safety issue. I had asked a planning board member to inquire about this property, the member told me he ran into a little difficulty with the town in regard, regards to this lot. I waited long enough and I found some digital records from the Plymouth Registry of Deeds. The assessors also have the property card available through digital access as well. The fire department, police department, assessor, border health agent have found this lot in question. So we have asphalt pile, sand being trucked in, wood chips with no three-sided barrier, stumps, commercial equipment, storage container, no port, a potting or sanitary area with water enhanced, I'm sorry, with a water hand washing station, that I've heard the board requires this of others. The town administrator tells me I need more information to locate this property. The town assesses map and parcel number isn't enough. The zoning officer and the conservation has not returned a call as promised. As you will see by the assessors' property card, this property is the undeveloped area as it needs a special permit due to endangered species that live on it. Mesa permit with engineered plans are needed. The Board of Health on 31721 proclaimed there is no site plan on this property. I can share my videotape of the meeting that I went to. I realize the health agent will continue to investigate this property, as I told him, he already has the information he needs in his file, as I took pictures of the folder. I believe that the safety issue of dump trucks entering and exiting is a paramount to take crush, quick action of this board. As far as the Mesa, no permit. They have no permit, I have contacted Lakeville Department of the Environment and shall await to hear from them. The safety of endangered species is important to our planet, we cannot wipe out living creatures because of the dollar. Sincerely, Joanne Andrews.
Okay. Does the board feel they have any appropriate action to take?
I would suggest that the board, um, reach out to the zoning officer and find out if there's a business being operated there, and there's no site plan, that he take action.
Okay. Uh, does that, is that a motion, Gordon?
If that's what you want.
You'd have to make some sort of a motion, I don't.
Then I make it a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to request zoning enforcement action, that, that what you're saying, Jordan, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so.
Yeah, that, if there's a violation of no site plan there, that you take action.
Okay, um, I want to get a second for discussions.
A second for discussion.
Okay. I, I guess my question is, what jurisdiction does the planning board have? Okay, hold on, go ahead, Amy?
Really, we're, we're asking what, with every other, um, thing that we've been going through in the past couple of months with stumps and compliance of the fire department and trying to go after other places, we're gonna not look at these same issues on another lot in town? What was the difference?
Okay, so we have a motion, any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll go to a vote, Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Amy?
Uh, yes.
Alan, no.
Alan, do you have a conflict with this owner of the property?
No.
Okay, that's on the record.
That's on the record.
Thank you.
Okay.
Who's the owner of the property?
Uh, one minute, Rick, the, the issue is, we've gone to the next item.
All right.
Okay, we have an email from Joan Pearce, Department of Fish and Game. I believe it's regarding the Aldana Road land swap that I believe the town has been negotiating probably around 30 years, anybody got any questions on that? Okay, I, I believe that's to fix the road, but not 100% sure, okay?
Fix the road in what way?
I mean?
Fix the road in what way?
If, gonna have to, once you probably have to meet with a slacker on that, because I don't want to say the wrong thing, but I believe there's some issues with the road.
You mean as far as finishing the road? Alan?
I'm sorry?
I'm not gonna hold you to it, are you talking about finishing the road, tarring the road?
There's some issues, and I'm going back when Ralph Haywood was the highway surveyor, that I don't know if the, the road's in the wrong place, or some of the property that the road is on belongs to Fish and Game. I just remember talking to Ralph years ago, um, and he was attempting to try to pave that because of boat, because of the school cutoff, and there were some issues, what they are exactly, I don't know.
Believe.
Maybe Gordon?
Yeah, I believe the, um, the issue was gonna get straightened out by the swap.
Correct. And I, I think this has been going on for
Long time.
Thirty-plus years.
A long time.
So. Okay, we have, uh, the next cor, uh, correspondence is a letter from the fire chief regarding the lodge tree service at 49 to 63 Carver Street, I believe that had to do with the storage of logs. Any questions?
What number is that?
Yeah, what is this?
Oh, what number?
Yeah.
Thirty-two.
Age twenty thousand.
No. It must be out of water, I did see the email come through. Might have missed it, might have missed it in the package.
It was in the first appointment for, for Carver Street.
It was in the first one?
Oh, right up front?
Yeah, page eight, I believe.
Okay. I missed that.
Yeah, it is page eight.
You know when everybody's got a chance to review it?
Can't find it, oh, I, I might have found it. Can't find it, oh, I, I might have found it. All right, want me to read this in the record?
Um, you, you don't have to, we need a motion for it, I just, he just put us on notice, I don't know.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll read it and I'll make a second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to read the, um, letter from the fire chief into the record, I'm gonna go to a roll call vote. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan, no. We have a, uh, three, one. Joanne?
March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, Gary, Gary Vallad, this letter is to Gary, Gary Vallad, Vallad Tree Service, two seventy Franklin Street, DM Mr. Vallad, this letter is a follow-up to our conversation on March tenth, twenty twenty-one regarding the storage of forestry products on your property, located at forty-nine and sixty-three Carver Street. At that time, I provided you with a copy of the NFPA one, chapter thirty-one, which contains the regulations for storing this type of material. You stated that the material was scheduled to be removed from the site within a week. I also advise you that zoning and planning board approvals may be required to utilize the lot for this purpose. As of March twenty-fifth, it appears that none of the material on the property has been removed and the processing of wood chips has not ceased. Effective immediately, I am ordering that no additional material be brought onto the property and that all existing material be removed within thirty days. I'm also advising you that burn, open burning is strictly prohibited on any commercial property, especially one containing forestry products. If your intentions are to store forestry products on this land in the future, an engineered site plan and a proactive fire prevention plan will be required. Please contact me if you have any questions, sincerely, Jason Ferros, Chief of Department.
Okay, a lot of being read into the record, does the board have an idea as to what you want to do?
I think that, um, we should wait and see what the fire department says, um, and by the next meeting before we would get involved, but I would say that a site plan, if they're gonna continue a use of forestry products and stumps, and such on the property, just like everybody else in town would need a site plan. But if it's a clearing, and they're not gonna be doing it as a continuous business, I mean, if they're just prepping a lot, I mean, I, I would need to know, but I'm sure we can get some sort of a, um, comment from them on that.
Okay, so what what's, what course of action do you want to take?
I'd say we do the same as the other one, we do nothing, seems to be what you want to do.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, wait a minute, so see, I didn't think that nothing was being done on some properties, but some were having something done, so I would say that we would continue to watch this like we have ordered to Cledge Tree Service at four fifty Industrial Drive. And I would also wonder why we wouldn't have that same pro- um, process happening on other pro- properties.
Okay, so do you want to continue this to our next meeting? The chief gave them, you read it into the record, what's the date, the thirty days from when the chief gave them?
The twenty-fifth, so it would be we could, we could just, um, I guess, put it on a, continue to be on the agenda until the thirty days is up and we find out what's going on and we can take motion after that.
Okay, I, I don't have a problem with that, anybody got a problem with that, leaving it on the agenda?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Uh, next order of business is, um, a letter from the Attorney General, which is going to be page thirty-three is actually the email. Page thirty-four is the, uh, the letter from the Attorney General, Attorney General, excuse me, regarding the ten sixteen twenty open meeting law complaint. That complaint was filed against me, by Amy True. I am not going to read it into the record unless somebody wants to. I'll paraphrase it. The Attorney General, on March twenty-fifth, uh, the decision was that they did not find the board, did not violate the open meeting law as alleged by Amy True. Cated, it, it stated a bunch of cases and reasons why, um, but I do want to point out that as part of the, the Attorney General's office did in fact review the whole tape. And I'm gonna take the heat for this, during that whole process, this was at the beginning of the open meet, uh, the, uh, meetings, and it was a limited twelve people, and at that meeting, I did ask someone to leave the meeting to try to maintain the twelve-person limit. Okay? There wasn't a, an actual ruling on this, but the Attorney General's memo concluded that that was done incorrectly. That I apologize. It also noted that in the governor's order, that the, the board, and this would be all the boards, um, when we do hold meetings, all right, that it has to be in a facility that does not have a strict limit capacity. Um, we know all of that now, this was in the middle of the, the orders, but all of our meetings, other than town meetings, if it appears to be a situation where we're gonna have a lot of members, we are required to adjourn. Again, like I did, we can't ask people to leave, uh, so our only alternative is to adjourn. That was just part of that decision, if someone wants to read it into the record, they can, if not, I consider the matter concluded.
I did put in an appeal with further evidence.
Okay, file that with the Attorney General?
I did.
Okay, the, um, I think the last, you know, last couple of orders of business, there's memos from various towns, it seems like Middleborough's got some zoning changes, East Bridgewater seems to be very busy, um, Halifax, the zoning board has, uh, a lot of petitions. I don't know if anybody's reviewed those and wants to make a comment regarding any of the Halifax petitions. Uh, we can do that as a board, the outside towns, you know, that's, that's up to, I think, the individual. Does anybody have or want to make any comments regarding any of the Halifax zoning board petitions? Hearing none, um. I just want to remind, it's in, it's in one of our letters, that on April twenty-second, I believe there's gonna be some sort of a Zoom, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, regarding the Flower and Soul Marijuana Facility. That's the one that they're proposing at eight ninety-four Plymouth Street. This virtual outreach meeting, I believe, is part of the cannabis control commission's requirements for anybody that's gonna cite in a particular community. So if you can make the time, uh, to hear that, we are going to be getting that petition at some point, so it might be helpful to get an idea as to what they want to do. Last order of business, Country Coldestates, the Forty Breed Project has been continued to May nineteenth, um, and that meeting is gonna be held by Zoom.
I, I did have, um, one comment on one of the hearings, um, that are going in front of the zoning board of appeals, um, that, um, it's page fifty-nine, it's twelve White Island Road in Halifax.
Can you hold on, let us get to page fifty-nine?
Yep.
Uh, Amy, I think everybody's got it, so you want to, go ahead?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the roof is already on the, um, off of the house over the deck. That it's already being built. Was this a cease and desist that, um, occurred that they have to go for a variance? Or is this going for a variance and they've already started building?
You're gonna have to reach out to building. I know the property, um, I know what you're talking, I know the roof, I, I don't know any of the particulars on this petition.
Yeah.
You'd have to reach out to zoning to get some sort of, uh, an answer. Did you feel as though that this board should respond, I mean, we have that ability to respond, whether you agree or disagree with the project?
We could, we could send a letter to them to say that it already is being built and we were, we're wondering if it was a cease and desist where they required them to go for a variance? Or whether or not it's unknown to them?
Okay, I, I can tell you that I did the site work on this parcel twenty-plus years ago. It's a corner lot.
Yep.
And I believe when we did that project, we got special permits because it was a corner lot, a pre-existing non-conforming lot. I can only assume that that roof probably encroached into the front line or the sideline, because Mont Pontet Street would be a front line in White Island Road, I can only assume.
I can see what they would need a variance for, I'm just curious, because it's already being built and there's a roof on it, there's shingles on top of that, there's posts all the way to the ground. It's, it's, I mean, basically trimmed out without shingles on a P, on a, uh, uh, on a, um, Amy, um, on one of the side walls, there's, there's a gable that is ready to be shingled.
Okay, what, uh, Joanne, when are we meeting again?
April fifteenth.
We're meeting the thirteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay, they are gonna hold this public hearing, prior to that, if you want to make some comments on your own, uh, Amy, please do. Like I say, I'm familiar with the site, so I would think that it's an encroachment because of the, our bylaws require that that house being on a corner lot needs fifty setback, um, from both Mont Pontet and White Island Road.
Agreed.
Just my opinion, um, if you I'm sure the, the, the board would listen to you if you've got some concerns. Anything else before the board tonight? Uh, board of selectmen, let me just see, trailer permits, I did go over the marijuana, the marijuana retailers, Flower and Soul, so if there is nothing else before the board tonight, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn at eight forty-three.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Second, hearing no discussion, uh, Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Good night, folks, Joanne, Joanne, for the record, did you have any idea when, uh, Mark popped off? So you can put that in the meeting minutes?
I did, let me look back, hold on a second.
But that's okay, you don't have to tell us now, just so that-
I did, because I, I texted and called, so.
Okay, very good. All right, good night, good night, folks.
Thank you.
Night.